Well, Jim Davis urged me to get the meeting underway. We've got a minute or two, though. And so I want to follow up on the Lori Fulbright presentation yesterday. Because last night, when I went to dinner on my anniversary with my wife, I went to pay for our dinner and guess what happened? My debit card was not in my wallet. My debit card's not in my wallet. So I quickly retrace. When was the last time I used it? I know exactly when I used it last. I used it at 5:55 PM on the day before. So it's been gone for 24 hours. Been gone for 24 hours. Suddenly, through my mind, I'm thinking about all the scams that could have taken place with my debit card. And I'm supposed to go to a movie with my wife in a few minutes. So I'm stuck with this terrible dilemma. What's the dilemma? Do I tell her that I have lost my debit card? No, 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 no. I don't tell her I've lost my debit card. I wait until we get home. And I call the number on the back of the, you know, the 800 number. And the instructions that I'm given are... Okay, oh, the instructions that I'm given are, do you want to cancel the card permanently right now? I'm stuck because I think I know where the card is. I think it's in the drawer of the, of the, of the cash register of the place that I made my last purchase because they didn't give me the card back when they gave me the receipt. But again, flashing through my mind, all of the fraudulent uses that could occur between now and when the store opens in the morning, last night, I say, cancel the card. So they canceled the cards, permanently canceled. Nine o'clock this morning, I get on the phone with the establishment. Right when they open, the person I spoke to goes to the credit card drawer. Yes, Mr. Dickie, your card is right here. I said, thank you very much. I canceled it last night. Cut the card up right now. She says, I'm cutting it up right now. So my card is completely cut up. I then called the Tulsa Teachers Credit Union and I get ahold of the credit card department. And guess what they tell me? Do you want us to reactivate the card? I said, you can reactivate the card? Yes, we can reactivate it right now. I said, well, I wish I had called you first. Because the card has been cut up. So now I have to go through the other hoops. But guess what? I didn't get scammed. There were no fraudulent uses on my card. Now, yesterday, I told you that my wedding anniversary was the 7th. I actually have a before and after picture that I want to show you. July 7th, 1984. See, Jane wanted faith to be here this morning. And I, I, she was already committed to do something else, so I just, I brought these instead. So that is, that's at my daughter's wedding. This is July 7th, 1984. Now, for the men in the group, I'd like to ask you a question. What would your future self say to your younger self? When you look at these two pictures, you know, what, what would I say to my younger self that I, that I know now that I didn't know in 1984? What would that be? Oh. I love that. Good choice. Yeah. I have not seen, hear, has not heard, nor has it entered into the hearts of men the good things that the Lord has in store for you. That's, that's probably what I would say to myself. I wouldn't go into the other stuff. You can't, you wouldn't hear anyway, would you? Okay, well, there you go, Jim. Are we ready? Are we, we're ready to start? Okay. So, about today's agenda. First of all, I kind of want to set the tone for the meeting by talking about the currency of trust. Every single person who chooses Trinity Woods is investing in the organization, in the people that work here, a sacred trust. It's a sacred trust. You're basically saying, I'm, I'm committing to you something that's precious to me. That is my future, my well-being, my health. And in return, I'm expecting you to fulfill a promise. And that is to serve us in the Spirit of Christ. That's the, that's the exchange that takes place. In order to do that, we step into a very unique relationship with every single one of you. Because we're going to face difficult discussions during that time. It's like this picture here, okay? It's like this picture here. There are going to be some difficult discussions that we're going to have to have. Today is one of those difficult discussions. Because what we're going to talk about is active shooters. And we actually had this discussion once before. What's that? Yeah, we're going to do that. We're going to get there. I'm setting the tone for the meeting and then I'm going to pray. Yes, okay, okay. No, I, I really mean this. We have, we have difficult discussions. And we're going to have one of those difficult discussions today. And all I wanted to do was to set the tone for the meeting by, by alerting to you that this discussion is coming in the agenda. And I, I just want to open the meeting with the word of prayer. Lord, we thank you for your grace and for your mercy. You promised that they're going to be new every single morning. And so we thank you for the new grace and the new mercy that we, that we benefit from today. We thank you for the privilege of loving and serving you and for the privilege of being able to live together and work together in this beautiful community. I ask for your blessing to rest on every single person here. And I ask you to, to be present with us as we talk about these difficult things today. We pray for your protection and for your sovereignty, for your providence to rest over all of us and all of our families. And we ask these things today in Jesus' name. Amen. Now, we have the awesome blessing of recognizing the stars of the month for this month. Kathy Green is coming forward as the supervisor of housekeeping. We are so, so thankful for Kathy. She is an amazing blessing to all of us. I know she's a blessing to you. And let me tell you a little bit about her. She started in, in, in this role in August of 2009. She's born and raised in Tulsa. Do you know what she wanted to be as a kid? She wanted to be an adult. Congratulations. She's described by her friends as crusty on the outside, but a marshmallow on the inside. She likes trail hiking and fishing. Her forever food is pizza. A special skill that I bet you didn't know that she has is that she's fluent in Pig Latin. Her first job was counting cattle on the trucks that were entering the stockyard. That's a great job. A fun fact, she has a minister's license and she's officiated over her own son's wedding. That's awesome. This is what Dennis Graham says about Kathy. She's loyal and hardworking and dedicated to employees. And she is a very hard worker. She's a pleasure to work with and she provides excellent customer service to the Trinity Woods organization. So would you please join me in expressing your appreciation to Kathy as we recognize her as the star of the month? Okay. The second person that we're recognizing is Laura Myers. Is she here? She's not here this morning. But when you see her, I pray that you will go by and just thank her. We'll present this a little bit later in the day. Laura is a server in the Charter Oak Dining Room. She started in January of 2022. She was born and raised in, in Tulsa. What she wanted to be as a kid was an archaeologist. An archaeologist. Her favorite recipe is shepherd's pie. She enjoys cooking and yard work. Her favorite holiday is Halloween. Her favorite saying is that nothing changes if nothing changes. She spends her free time cooking, sleeping, and traveling. And a fun fact about her is she says that she's very shy when I first meet people. You'd never guess that, would you? Stacy Pine is Laura's supervisor. And this is what Stacy has to say about Laura. She's a blast to work with. She's always smiling and laughing and she truly loves serving the people of Trinity Woods. So please, join me in expressing your appreciation to Laura Myers, who is a star of the month. Very good. Now, I'm going to ask Richard Applegate to come forward. Because we have a very special presentation. We are recognizing Joselito Fernandez for a milestone in his employment at Trinity Woods. Would you please come forward? We are recognizing him for 10 years of service in the Charter Oak Dining Room. And he works in the, in the kitchen as a dishwasher and a prep cook. And we are so thankful for everything that you do here to serve the people of Trinity Woods. Would you join me giving Joselito a round of applause?
Thank you so much. You're a real blessing. Thank you. Appreciate it. And here's your pen. Very good. Very good. Thank you so much. Isn't that awesome? Okay. Okay.
Now, before I get into this, I just want to take a second to, to comment about the Fourth of July parade. Wasn't that awesome? That was so awesome. I think on the 3rd of July, I got word of a question that came up. And the question was, hey, could we invite the Afghan refugees who live in the Dartmoor subdivision to come and participate in the parade? And honestly, I really didn't know how that would, whether that would work or not. And an interesting thing happened. So this is what, one of the things I love about Trinity Woods. Sometimes the best ideas don't originate at the top. Sometimes the best ideas come from within. And so guess what happened? Jane Waters had the idea. And she called Vicky Langston, who called Irene Brown, who called me. I called Tracy Hall and Jeremy Fulda. And they called the core couples that are serving the Afghan families. And guess what happened? Several families came to the Fourth of July parade. And it was the most amazing thing to go by waving the flag from Jesse's Jeep and to see these families experiencing their first Fourth of July in all of their lives where they were enjoying freedom. I mean, it was ama, it was an amazing experience. So thank you for a great idea. And if you have a good idea, you know that all you have to do is call Jane, who will call Vicky, who will call Irene, who will call one of us and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll get going. Okay, we ready? Here we go. Oh, okay. I think we're... That's weird. That's not the first line. Sorry. I don't know what happened. Am I doing this? What? Yes, please. Yeah. I've got a handout for everybody and I'm going to rely on somebody else to get me... There we go. We're at the beginning. Okay, so the first time that we did this was in 2017. And there are really no changes to this presentation. The presentation is essentially the same as it was several years ago. What we're going to do is we're going to walk through a set of, we're, we're going to give you a response plan that you can use anywhere you are. And we're going to give you the response plan that would apply here in the event that an active shooter event occurs on the campus of Trinity Woods. Since this time, Dennis and I have been through a number of different scenarios. And what's interesting is, is that in the last several years, very little has changed about the response to an active shooter event. There have been more active shooter events. And so because of that, we feel like it's important for us to go over this again. So I wanted everybody to have a handout. And what we're going to do is walk through this together. And if you have any questions at the end, I want to be able to try to help answer those. So... Okay, we did run out of handouts. If we could have one per couple, that might help. And if you would like for us to email this to you, we can certainly do that. So here we go. We first want to talk about the profile of an active shooter. An active shooter is an individual who engages in killing or attempting to kill people in a confined and populated area. In most cases, the active shooter is using a weapon. And in most cases, there's no pattern or method to their selection of victims. Active shooter incidents are unpredictable and they evolve very, very quickly. Some of them are, occur inside, some of them occur outside. They're very random and they're very unpredictable. Typically, the immediate deployment of law enforcement is required in order to stop the shooting and to mitigate the harm to victims. Because these incidents are often over in just a matter of minute, minutes, even sometimes before law enforcement arrives on the scene, it's very important that all of us have a heightened sense of awareness about how to respond. And that's the purpose of this presentation today. To help us mentally and physically deal with an active shooter situation. So, how do we respond? Quickly determining the most reasonable way to protect your own life is the best way to respond. We want you to remember that residents and visitors are likely to follow the lead of employees, not only here, but in whatever situation you might find yourself in during that active shooter situation. So, the first thing that you want to do is to evacuate. If there's an accessible escape plan, escape path, having that in mind when you enter a new area, surveying where the exits are, being conscious of your situation, having that situational awareness is always important. So that when and if it's necessary to evacuate the premises, you know where you're going to go. So having that escape route in mind is important. Evacuating regardless of whether or not others follow is important. Leaving your belongings behind, except making sure that you have your cellphone, is important. If you can, help others escape. If, it's, it's also best to be able to try to prevent individuals from entering, entering the area where the active shooter may be to help with their safety. Keeping your hands visible is very important and following the instructions of police officers. And not attempting to, to move wounded people because that puts you in harm's way. The second instruction is to hide out. So evacuating is the first one, hiding out is the second one. If evacuation is not possible, finding a place to hide where the active shooter is less likely to find you is the best course of action. Some guidelines for selecting that hiding place would be to be out of the shooter's view, to provide protection if shots are fired in your direction, not to trap or restrict your options for movement in the future. And then this is really important. Locking the door or blockading the door to prevent an active shooter from entering your hiding place is really important. Also in the category of hiding out, if there is an active shooter nearby, locking the door, silencing your cellphone or pager so that it wouldn't draw attention if it rings is important. Turning off any source of noise like a radio or a TV so that you can be more aware of the situation. And then hiding behind large items, cabinets or desks. And of course, keeping quiet. Also in the category of hiding out, if evacuation, if evacuation and hiding out are not possible, remaining calm, dialing 911 so that you can alert the police to the active shooter's location. And even if you can't talk on the phone, to leave the line open to allow the dispatcher to list, to allow the dispatch, to allow the dispatcher to listen to what's happening in real time at the site. The third category is, and this is the last resort, is to take action against the active shooter. When your life is in imminent danger and you have no choice, attempting to disrupt or to incapacitate the shooter is the, the last resort. Acting as aggressively as possible, throwing items or improvising weapons, yelling, and being fully committed to your actions is the final and last resort if you can't hide or escape. So what do you do if you're in a situation when law enforcement erupts? Law enforcement, law enforcement's purpose is to stop the active shooter as soon as possible. Officers will proceed directly to the area in which the last shots were heard. They may be wearing military-style equipment like Keflar helmets and tactical equipment. They will have bulletproof vests. They're going to look threatening. They also may be armed with rifles, shotguns, or handguns. They may actually use pepper spray or tear gas to control the situation. They may be loud. They may shout commands and they may push individuals to the ground for their safety. But all of these are appropriate law enforcement responses to the active shooter situation. In going a little farther, how to react when law enforcement arrives? Again, remaining calm, following the instructions of the police officers, putting down anything that's in your hands, any type of a bag, a, 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 a handbag or a jacket, immediately raising your hands and spreading your fingers so you can demonstrate your vulnerability. Keep your hands visible at all times. Avoid making quick movements toward the officers such as holding on to them for safety. Avoid pointing, screaming, or yelling. Do not stop to ask officers for help or direct, direction when evacuating. What you do is you proceed in the direction from which they came. It's obvious that that's, the shooter's not going to be in the place that they just came from. So following, retracing their steps is important. There are several things that a 911 operator or a law enforcement officer is going to want to know. They're going to want to know the, the location of the active shooter. They're going to want to know the number of shooters, if there's more than one. They're going to want a physical description of the person. They're going to want to know the number and the type of weapons that are held by the shooter. And they're also going to need to know the number of potential victims at the location. So being able to provide that information is really, really very helpful. This is what you can expect from law enforcement. The first officers to arrive on the scene will not stop to help injured people. Rescue teams comprised of additional officers and EMTs will follow those initial officers. These rescue teams will treat and remove the injured persons. But the first officers to arrive on the scene are going to be focused on eliminating the threat. They may also call upon able-bodied individuals to assist in removing the wounded from the premises once the situation is stabilized. Once you've reached a safe location or an assembly point, you'll likely be held in that area by law enforcement until the situation is under control. And all witnesses have been identified and questioned. Once you leave the building, you will not be allowed back into the building because it's a crime scene at that point. Do not leave until law enforcement authorities have instructed you to do so. So what are the best practices for coping with an active shooter situation? First of all, be aware of your environment and any possible dangers. Secondly, take note of the two nearest exits. And if you happen to be in an office, stay there and secure the door. As a last resort, attempt to take the active shooter down. When the shooter is at close range and you can't flee, your chance of survival is much greater if you try to incapacitate the shooter. And of course, call 911 when it is safe to do so. We feel that it's important to stay informed about issues, even issues that are as sensitive and difficult as this is. Even over the Fourth of July, we had another one of these events and we wanted to be able to take time today to go over these important tips with you. Feel free to share this information with your family. And it really, this really applies no matter where you are, when you're out in public or when you're here on the campus. So with that, let me pause and see if you have any questions for us. Phyllis has a question.
Yes, we have people trying to come in this building, Crestwood, all the time. Night before last, I was coming out of the dining room and there was a lady that was shaking the door wanting in. I went up to her and told her, we cannot let you in, you have to call security. She left, got in the car and left the building and I guess the property. So I think a lot of people that's in the dining, in the Crestwood lobby does not realize they cannot let people in, that they do not know.
It's a very simple thing. You can graciously, if someone doesn't have a key card and they're not met at the lobby there by their get, by their host, all you have to do is call security, they'll be happy to assist the person. So. It's a simple process in order to address that situation. So thank you for trying to come to the person's aid. They can call security on the phone that's in the foyer there, or you can call for them if you'd like. Yes, Tom? So the question was, is there a general PA system that connects people in the building? We do not have a public address system. We typically use digital technology to communicate with people, but we don't have a PA system. Could we look into a PA system? I really think we're probably moving in the direction of using more virtual technology. It's, first of all, it's more readily available and. So I probably think that's the direction that we're headed.
He called security and they let him in without asking his name or who he was coming to see. And I did let Bron know because we knew the name of the person.
Okay.
But that needs to be reinforced.
Sure.
With security.
Sure, thank you very much.
I've had several people ask the question, is there security cameras in the garage, in the parking garage?
There are security cameras in the parking garage. I know that we have people who are participating online and I know that you may, you know, if you're like me, you think of the question that you wanted to ask after the event. I definitely want you to feel free to reach out. And ask us questions. If you have questions. And you'll have to forgive me, I've been a poor host myself here. I failed to recognize that we have a guest in our midst this morning. The Owens have brought Father David Bumstead to join us and we're so delighted that you're here this morning. Thank you for joining us, glad to have you. Thank you very much for allowing us the privilege of serving you. Oh, I'm sorry.
When we come in the garage of Crestwood, our clicker opens the door, but then it sets open and you drive to your parking space, you park, you walk back up to the elevator and the door is still open, nobody around, nobody watching it, anybody outside can come right in. Is there any way these can be programmed so we can shut the door behind us?
Dennis, do you know how long the delay is set for the closing of the garage door?
I don't, I don't know the exact time of the delay, I'm guessing about 45 seconds. Maybe longer, I don't know for sure. We can look into it. The reason it was extended was because of the doors that came down and people ran into it, their cars and those types of things. We can make adjustments to that, we can take it all the way back to 15 seconds. So there's.
I think 15 seconds seems a little quick.
Yeah. So we can, I mean, but there's not any way I know of for us to convert the clicker to, and I don't think it would be safe to close the door as you're going in because you don't know how many cars are trailing behind you. So. I agree, yeah. It's one of our tricky scenarios, I guess, I would say. We just got to figure out a safe and comfortable time that everybody's comfortable with, but there has to be a little bit of a delay.
If you have a question and you would like to send it our way, please feel free to do so. With that, we're going to move along in our agenda and Dennis Graham is going to provide an update.
Good morning. Real quick, got a couple areas to give you updates on Crestwood carpet on the third floor. We've talked about that several times, we've talked about, we've got it ordered, supplies, supply chain challenges, we got a call, there's another delay in getting our supply. So it probably looks like we won't be able to start and get all of our product until about the first of September. So. Seventy-five percent of it's in, but the rest of it is lagging and so we're just waiting on it all to come in so we can get it all done at one time. So the good news is, is we're starting to work on the second floor, so hopefully when we get the third floor finished, the second floor will, carpet products will be here and we'll be able to just start rotating right into the floor. So it's a real challenge right now. The other thing is, just FYI on the Owen Park area, if you notice, we've been doing a lot of work, the fountain is coming along, the water feature. I'm hoping we have that finished in the next couple of weeks. It's not, doesn't appear we have a supply chain issue on it, it seems like that all of our products are available, so we should be able to finish that up pretty quickly here. The guys are working, sometimes they'll work till three or four o'clock, but they've been starting kind of early and shutting down early because it's been pretty hot. So hopefully we'll get a break in the weather and they can work a full day. The other thing is the west gate that we talked about, having fobs for your windshields available. All of the components have come in and Ty is working on scheduling, getting that installed. Hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we should have more information on that. And then those of you who wish to purchase a fob for your windshield, we'll have a plan for you to work either through security or member services to get those taken care of, get them put on and you guys can stop, start opening and closing the gate and not have to roll your windows down when it's raining. So hopefully that'll be, that'll be complete in the next couple of weeks. And, yeah, okay. Aside from that, I think those are the three things I have, I've been on vacation a couple of weeks, so I'm catching up. I thank you all for allowing me to do that and my wife and I thoroughly enjoyed our time. So thank you very much.
Right back here, we're gonna start.
Who?
Okay, back here.
Yeah, Virginia.
Is the carpet on the fourth floor of Crestwood ever going to be finished? There was, they were going to put some kind of neutral strips between the two kinds of carpet because they're so ugly together. We were told they were going to put some kind of a barrier between the two kinds of carpet.
There is, there's a strip, there's a solid strip that goes in between the two to break up the transition between the two colors. I don't, Jesse, has that been installed?
No.
It's ordered, okay. Soon as it comes in, we'll cut those strips out, put it in. Hang on just a second.
The hot tub is still not working. What, when's that going to be done?
Yeah, they ordered, I believe, a new boiler for that and we're just waiting on it to come in. Just to kind of give you guys an idea of supply chain challenges right now, we also ordered a new, we're having some trouble with the HVAC and the dehumidification on the pool and those units are about seven to 10 year lifespan. You know, I ordered a new unit for the span wellness pool area and the shipment is 37 weeks. So thank goodness, we're 12 weeks into that, so we only have 25 to go. Yeah, Rob?
That is, it's the old question, any new news on when you might close Sandusky? I'm getting strangers coming to our house occasionally asking directions and they're running that stop sign like it wasn't even there.
I don't know that we have. We had a plan and then we decided not to gate the community, but change the front entrance. There's some other things in the works, but right now, I don't think I could give you a timeframe. I would say that for the distant future, that Sandusky is going to remain open. I don't really have a plan at this time to shut it down, to gate it.
Can you give us an updating on the lighting on Sandusky?
Yeah, that's a great question. So. The lighting on Sandusky was the question, what are we going to do on the lighting? And the lighting fixtures are ordered, I believe some of them are in, I don't think all of them come in yet. We've started to run the electrical service under the creek, so Lighthouse Electric should be out next week to work on bringing, pulling wire and things like that over there. Jesse, are we four weeks out, probably, about four weeks out of completing the lighting? That includes the bollard lighting for the path as well as the street lighting for Sandusky. Yes? Yeah. Any other? Yes. Yes, that's a great question too. Update on the new roads for the patio homes, we will be starting that project the first week of August. Yes? Okay, that's another supply chain challenge. I think, Jesse, did those benches come in, do you know? Twenty weeks, so we probably, what did we order those, about eight weeks ago? Yeah, so we're, the better news is we're 12 weeks out now. Or within 12 weeks of something. It's, I'm telling you, it's a difficult thing to manage right now.
I wondered if the three new houses are taken?
That's a great question as well, wow, you guys are. The question was of the three houses, the three villas that we're building new, are they all taken? And I believe two are taken and one is still open. So one is available. So call your friends just as soon as we leave here, have them contact Bonnie and I guarantee you they'll get you going. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. Yes? No, all the landscape, we've done all the landscaping, what we're going to do around the maintenance building, yeah. Yep, I don't have any fence plans or anything like that right now for that. You talking about for where the parking lot area is? Yeah, on the north side where the vehicles are parked, yeah, I don't have any, the maintenance project's complete. Okay, thank you very much.
Please welcome Bonnie Pollak, Vice President of Philanthropy and Community Engagement.
Well, Dennis, look, I got an applause. Had to rub it in. Okay, actually Steve, I think we're going to tag team because you had a question.
Okay.
About availability.
You go first.
So right now Carrie and Jennifer are passing, you can raise your hand. First of all, I'm going to start something easy. How many of you have a friend that doesn't currently live here? Feel free to raise your hands, it's audience participation. How many of you think you have a friend, keep them up, come on, come on. How many of you have a friend that you think would love to live here, they just don't know it yet? Okay, keep your hands up because we're also going to bring you a referral card. Please, please, normally we do a drawing and June I got no referrals from you, which is very unusual. So we have referral cards for you to get, to give us names, we're happy to call them. We would love for you to tell them we're going to call them, that's always nice so people don't feel totally blindsided. So referral is obviously still a great way that people learn about us. We are getting a lot of leads right now, we probably, in fact, Christie could not come today because she was on a tour. We're probably on average right now anywhere from three to six tours a week, which is a huge increase from about two months ago. So we're definitely seeing some activity with our lead generation that we're working on. I know there was Christie and, or Christie, Jennifer and Carrie also have sheets of July availability of what we're featuring for July, if you just kind of want to know what's open. But I know you had a question about availability and census that I want to let you take on real quick.
Sure. So as you know, as we look toward Town Hall, we want to invite questions. And I got a question by email about how we're doing with overall census on the campus. And I'm really pleased to tell you that we are either at or nearly at capacity for assisted living, we are at or nearly at capacity in memory care assisted living in the Barnes House and the Marshall Gaddy House, and we are at or nearly at capacity for accommodations in the health center. We are, we are literally on the threshold of reopening 10 additional accommodations in the health center, once we have the staffing to be able to do that. So in terms of our healthcare side, things are going very well. With regard to independent living, we have a number of spaces that are available and I want to tell you what those are here. So there are nine Felt House residences available, there are three patio homes that are available, there are two villas that are available and 10 Crestwood residences that are available. And we are really excited about being able to reach out to prospective residents. We're going to be doing a number of things, including inviting people to participate in events that are taking place on the campus. in events that are taking place on the campus. So for example, the summer school. We would love nothing more than to include people who are thinking about becoming your neighbors in these classes. And so I want you to think about this, the agenda for summer school. And I'd love for you to think about people that you know that might like to take a class. So for example, this is a class that I'm really interested in.
If they would like to come before Irene has a panic attack, please reach out to our office. We love to let Irene know they're coming and we can make arrangements for that. Please, please let us know they're going to be there.
So for example, next Thursday, don't you want to know what's in Mike Reynolds' red folder? I mean, I mean, I'm so intrigued, but I don't have a red folder. I think my kids would love it if I had a red folder, wouldn't they, Mike? Okay. So if you know somebody that might be interested in learning about that, that would be, that would be awesome. There, there's a class in August on genealogy that Phyllis is doing. If you know somebody that would like to come to Phyllis's class, that would be awesome. Doris is going to be doing a class on poetry. Vicky's going to be doing a class on podcasting. And Bob Benz is doing a class on, it's going to be a, a poetry reading. And so if you know people that would like to participate in these things, please reach out and include them with an RSVP.
We would love to know they're coming. That does not mean a salesperson will join them. But we do like to know that they're going to be here and what they attended and that they knew you. And we love to let our friend Irene know because it just makes life better.
Very good. So.
So with that being said, we are definitely working on independent living census. Please know that. And some of you already even know this, you should not have received an invitation, but that doesn't mean we don't love you. We just love you more. And we are doing, we're hosting an event in July. It's, we're calling it the BB Q and A. And we are having a really great response right now. These invitations went to people who hopefully you didn't get one because you live here. And people who really haven't ever met us before. It is really people who are first time thinking about moving to a community like ours. And so this is not a member event, although we would love it if you want to tell us who your friends are and invite them to come. We would happily reach out to them and get them an invitation. But this really is just a prospect event for them to learn more about us, us to learn about them. And then we fine tune it more. And that's when we kind of have more member interaction and kind of fine tune the next layer of the sales process of them getting to know you and coming to other things in a smaller. But this is meant to be really kind of a larger event that they really just learn about what Trinity Woods is, how a CCRC works and kind of that continuum. So this is our next big event for prospects. So if there's somebody that you know that would like to come just to learn, this is a great event for them and we would be happy to get in touch with them. So let us know that. You can call me, you can call Christie or Heidi, either one, and we can make sure that they learn about that. Any questions about kind of the sales team right now? Okay, then I'm going to flip over to philanthropy. And I wanted to give you guys an update. We are still in the Good Samaritan Fund campaign. And for those of you who don't know what the Good Samaritan Fund is, I'm going to define it two ways. One, if you've been here a long time, it used to be called the Supplemental Aid Fund. And when we were looking at that, we realized that Good Samaritan really defined the fund more. And it's a fund that is in place for people who through no fault of their own, run out of money. And we don't want them to leave the community. They are people you probably have met at some point. I personally do not know anybody who receives, it's very much done anonymously. I really just raised the money, but it is very much done in a very private way for their own personal benefit and respect. But as of today, and this only counts from when the campaign started, which would have been the beginning of June, it'll run through the end of July. And that this is where we've had, we've had 73 donors. We're currently, we probably today I got a few checks, we probably are right at 30,000. But this year, one of the things we added with the campaign is that for any donation of $300, we engrave a brick for you. And those bricks are right outside the community life center. And that's a great way to remember a loved one or even put something down for you and your spouse or your family. Bricks say all sorts of fun things. So if you are interested in that, please let me know. But for those of you who have donated, please know that is probably one of the largest areas of need on campus, to be really honest. I believe annually, it's anywhere from 12 to 15. But the fund is, like the amount that is usually required is well over, can you? Yeah, I was going to say $150,000 is usually required annually for this, for that type of. Okay, so.
So the supplemental aid fund, the Good Samaritan Fund helps people who are living in the healthcare households who have outlived their financial resources. And what it does is it, it, it serves, as Bonnie said, an average of about 15 people every year. And it's, it, it helps us to fulfill the promise that we make to people that once you become a member here, we're going to take care of you for the rest of your life. Yes, it's in the, in the nursing center, yes.
Richard, did you have a question? Okay, so we take money from the general fund. We fundraise for it and whatever's not met through our fundraising campaign, it is budgeted in.
It, it's basically benevolent care that's provided by us, yes. It's unfunded. It's bene, it's benevolent care. It's unreimbursed care that we provide. Yeah. We're not, we're not going to not serve somebody, but it is unreimbursed care.
Is it just for people at, healthy or not, Crestwood or anything?
Just a moment, Phyllis. From that budget, from the operating funds?
What about people living in Crestwood or assisted living or even memory care or the houses? If that doesn't help them at all?
The, the, the Good Samaritan Fund, that, the Good Samaritan Fund only helps people who are living in the nursing center. That's correct.
So let's say you are in a Crestwood or something and all of a sudden you run out of money. What happens? You just got to go? Or you go over to the healthcare center? I'm sorry, just don't understand.
If a person in, if a person in independent living runs out of money through no fault of their own, they didn't squander their resources, they didn't give their resources away. What we, what we always do is work with that person to see to it that their, that, that their support is maintained. It sometimes does involve a move, but we fulfill our commitment to serve people for the rest of their lives.
That's all I have unless you guys have any more questions. Otherwise I look forward to seeing all of your referral cards and a big drawing next month because you, for every referral you turn in, you get in a drawing for a hundred dollar gift card. We do that every month. I just didn't have any this month. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Bonnie. Jennifer Rawlings.
It worked for everyone else. There we go. I just wanted to give one shout out. So Steve mentioned Mike Reynolds presentation next week and we've had so many people make reservations that we've outgrew the space. So we have moved that presentation to the Fleming Center, still same time, same date, but is now in the Fleming Center. So now we have more room. So if you want to invite your friends or if you didn't get your reservation in, you can call the reservation hotline and come to his event. And then we also have the teen tech support, which is next Friday from nine to 11. We have a group from Metro Christian coming to provide tech support. So if you need any help with your phones, your tablets, your iPads, your computers, anything, please call the reservation hotline and sign up for one of those time slots to work with one of the Metro Christian kids to, to figure that out. And then Jacob's not here today. He's on vacation. So he wanted me to give a mask kind of update. So we sent that information out a couple of weeks ago, but if you are in the Holloman building, so if you leave the doors from the community life center and enter into Holloman, that is considered a licensed area. So you have to have a mask on in that area. And the tranquility wellness wall is included in that space. So if you are going to Cypress Grill or if you're going to see Kim or any of that space, going to the creative studio, everyone has to have a mask on in that area. There are masks located at both entrances. So if you don't have a mask, we provide them for you. But please help us with that because it's licensed area. It's mandated by the state. We have to be in compliance with that. So. Does anyone have any questions about the mask? Awesome. The other thing I wanted to, she was in here for a little bit, but she had to leave because she had an appointment. But it's been brought to our attention that Tina Keck in the salon has been with us for 32 years. And she is a contract employee, but she's been with us her, her whole salon career. So I do have some flowers I'm going to give to her, but if you, after this, if you want to stop in and tell her congratulations, because 32 years is a long time. Long time, yes. And then the other person I want to introduce is Angie. She is our new wellness assistant. She's been with us a little over a month. She has a write-up in the Trail Mix. She handles all the reservations, all the reservation sheets. When you call the reservation hotline, she's checking that. So she's the woman behind the scenes making sure everything is rolling from the programming standpoint. So please stop by and say hi to her. And then we have a new memory care wellness coordinator that will start next week. If you all came to the wellness breakfast right before this, Amber, who used to be or currently right now is with Senior Helpers, is coming to work for us to provide wellness programming in Marshall Gaddy, Barnes and in Cobb Landing. So we're really excited to have her expertise and resources to join our team as well. So you'll be seeing her around our campus more often. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Jim Gunther.
I know what you're thinking. What is a CFO doing with these pretty flowers? I'll tell you. Today I want to recognize Chris Harvey. Come up, Chris. Chris has been with Trinity Woods, Methodist Manor for almost 16 years. And Chris has decided to take another position, another organization. So next Friday is her last day here at Trinity Woods. So if you want to stop by and say hi to her, she's been, I'm almost in panic mode now that I've. I got 16 years to learn in about five days. So. But I just want to take this moment to thank Chris for everything she's done. She's been the backbone of the financial department. I know Scott Morgan thinks very highly of her the little time we worked together. And all I can say is thank you and you will definitely be missed. There you go. You want to talk? She doesn't want to talk.
I want to add my thanks and a deep appreciation for everything that Chris has done here. Does anybody have any other questions before we close this month's town hall? Again, if you think of a question, please feel free to call or email. Otherwise, everybody have a great Friday. Thanks so much for coming out today.